For which stands one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'd like to ask that we observe a moment of silence for the following individuals. Robert J. Callipeter, Sr., a 1956 graduate of North Syracuse Central School District, and Danny G. Bison, or Bisson, a 1985 graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. First up, presentation is good news. Elizabeth Westmore. Okay. First up is the junior high school BPT presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening, welcome.
Welcome, welcome to us, very interesting, very holiday, everyone. Five of us here, we've got building goals, we have Tiffany Nelson here to come for our co-chair of BPT. And Mr. John Williams, Dwight, myself, here for our study administration before our group center BPT.
Welcome.
The ladies over there, they're very excited.
First of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to share what we're doing at the junior high. It's always nice to show what we spend our time doing every day. As far as the building goals go, we're going to start here with a little bit from the new strategic plan. We've incorporated a lot of this into our building goals for the year so that not only can we grow as a building, but we can assist the district in growing and getting to make sure all of our students are successful. So as far as the eighth grade students go in ELA, our goal right now is that 62% or more of them will score a level three or four on the ELA New York State Assessment. And this is up, what did we score, 59, I think? 55? Last year's score was 55%, so our goal for this year is 62 and then 95% participation. And then also, ninth grade, we're looking to get 92% or more of them to get a 65 or higher in their ninth grade English course. And this, we pulled right from the strategic plan because we do want to be a part of our district-wide goals and we do want to make sure that not only are we meeting the goals at the junior high, but we're assisting again in the district goals.
Per math, we're going to be aiming for 69% or more of our eighth grade students scoring level three or four on the Math 8 New York State Assessment with a 95% participation rate. And 87% or more of all of our ninth grade students, 5% or above in the Algebra regions. 51% of those students with disabilities should also be 65% or above on the regions.
Now, like I mentioned, these goals from the strategic plan, we're incorporating into what we have been doing as our building goals. Now, this is our second year where we've taken, instead of doing our independent department, each academic section has had its own goals in the past. This is our second year of looking at goals as a building wide. So we have reading, writing, and math goals that we've been working on. And our reading goals are looking at informational text, comprehending it, working with it, looking at differing points of views, stretching the student's ability to think and to think critically. And then also using the evidence to back up their beliefs, their opinions, to state if something is true or false. And instead of saying, "Well, I know that because of this," they can say, "No, here, right in the text, I found it. This is where it says." So those are our reading goals that we're on our second year of working with. And each academic subject uses the same goals, they just work with it in a different way depending on how it fits into their curriculum. Our writing goal is working on expository and analytical pieces of writing. Going from that story writing that students are comfortable with and pushing them to write document-based questions, to write historical events, scientific experiments, things that are more academic-based.
Our building math goal, we're trying to integrate as much math as possible into all of our subject areas and we're really focusing on problem-solving skills, higher-level thinking, Bloom's taxonomy, and really trying to get kids to think outside the box to analyze and solve problems. These are some examples of our departmental strategies. Our strategies that different departments in our building are using to incorporate these goals. For instance, in math classes, we're incorporating the use of journals to get kids writing about previous night's homework, new lessons, explaining their thinking, and then along with problem-solving, explaining how they came up with solutions, what the thought process was during the problem-solving process. Extra examples from just some of our subject areas.
This is a report we put together every June and through being at, collecting data. One of the reasons we've included this is this is an example of another piece of data that we collect. Notice we've been gathering this data since year 2005. And what we do is we look at the ninth graders. When we originally had put this together, we were having a discussion about the number of credits that ninth grade, each ninth grade student we needed to get before moving out to CNS. And we decided that every single ninth grade student had to have a minimum of 6.5 credits and then take that up to be a 10th grader at the high school. And each year you can see we are moving up slowly but surely in the sense of these are the number of students that are earning those credits each year that we have had. Then we've added the piece of the number of students in the percent passing ELA 9, which is the gateway course. Then we've also added the math 9, which you know since 2005 has been Algebra, has the math 9, has been a different kind of course, but that is now Algebra. You can see how we've kept about the same, but we've also managed to move up and we're going to continue to move up. We added the pieces of low, which is Latin result of English, and the region science credit increased years because the realization is as we added courses. Our goal was, yes, this all the way back when Mr. Troy was up there. One of his goals was to think we're not getting to teach low to students coming out of ninth grade that will all have that minimum low credit, so no one would go to the high school without a low credit. So that was handed because we were trying very hard to make sure every single ninth grader that left the junior high school had a minimum of low credit, some of them having two and then moving out to three at the high school. So that's our real goal of our ninth grade low teachers, and making sure that every single student has their low credit because they need one credit low. Every single student at the junior high school takes region science now. So that was added in 2008, 2009. As we moved on to that, then we offered a general science course and moved to a all-region course. So now we have Earth Science, we have physics, and we have living environment. So this is a historical perspective, we continue to add to this each year. I think the important thing to mention is the fact that each year we find that we are having more students that are earning that 6.5 credit than we have right about the same, we need to push that up. The next piece of data is another thing that we looked at and will continue to look at. Each year we get our passing rates and we determine our passing rate in various subjects. If you look down, this is each academic course that we teach at the junior high school. You can see the passing rates in June of 2012, many cases were actually 100%. So we're hoping they still maintain 100%. Most classes are doing very, very well, we have some areas we do need to work out, there's some areas at the 70% area, there's one at the 60% area, but also there is some history behind some of these courses in terms of what we're having to do. For example, we know a course like Living Environment, this is at about 78%. The majority of the students in most classes are the students that have poor math skills and not take the earth science and are all ready to get rid. So when we first started Living Environment, we barely had 50% of the students passing and now we are up to 78%, so that is growing each year and each year we're improving better with it. I'd also like to point out, like the Spanish one, C-Force, that seems to have a poor passing rate, but compared to when we first started the course, that has actually gotten better because those students are historically the students who have failed a low course three years in a row or two years in a row and are usually have culture course and the last course that they can take before going out to high school where they may achieve a low credit. So each year we try to push that and try to get more kids passing, but unfortunately, those students are struggling and have students who really need to concentrate. Another piece of data, the next piece of data is basically, we thought we would put this in because this lines up with the strategic plan, 2012, we were 55% and 61%. 2013, our goal is to be 62% and 69%. 2014 will be 74 and 77, and as mentioned in 2015, 80% and 85%. And the important thing to talk about a little bit of BPT is the fact that even though in eighth grade we had 55% of the students passing in that eighth grade, in ninth grade, we have upwards of almost 90% of the students going to 10th grade with an ELA 9 credit, and then when they take a region's 11th grade, we're talking about 96%. So even though that may seem like about half the kids are being successful, we see with these buildings and the gaps where the kids need to retain skills so they can eventually exceed each other's. So I think we've done some improvements.
We have some things we've been using in our building that have been working and we would like to continue seeing them. First of all, we have the Instruction for All Students book, which every teacher in our building has. We can listen to teachers sharing strategies and ideas in the teachers' rooms, whether it's the same department or across departments. Lots of people are using the book and it's really helpful. As well as always referring back to Bloom's. We have an "Are you blooming?" poster in our room, we try to use it as much as possible and always keep in mind that we should.
Thank you for the opportunity to share on a daily basis and how we push our students to be successful over at the junior high. Are there any questions that we can answer for you?
Couple of things came to mind. First of all, you know, you graduated for the progress that the kids have made. I wondered, when you looked at the data, just like past political campaign, we don't want to just look at the 55%. Have we disaggregated our data, Connie, and looked at that 45% to see what the portrait of that student is and where that student, you know, might be deficient?
Many of our students here, our AIS students, our students who have disabilities of our subjects, and each year we serve the K and N in terms of how we help those students. Each year the focus group in terms of ELA is still functioning, does an analysis of the task. Maybe solar, there's analysis that we have in ELA, we have both levels eight and nine to do to see where we need to fill the gaps and focus the teachings. We talked about this in the spring when we were here. Unfortunately, many of those students that are levels one to come to us as levels one to. And these are students that have struggled for a long time. So this is a systemic thing. And I think over the past few years, we've started giving these tests in 1999. And over those years, I think it's only been the past three or four years that actually we've increased the communication from the seventh grade to the sixth grade. I can remember, I think you did remember this, I think it was like a few or four years ago, they actually saw the eighth grade test. So we are starting to really communicate with those levels beneath us and the levels above us so we can have a systemic goal in all the areas. And I think it's starting to happen. Of course, with ELA tests, as we all know, we get to a point where we build and build a building, that means changes have to change the rules. Pushed out and then paid for, we have to hold it at home. But I think those goals that we have, the system, the ELA task force, the segments, obviously change. We are still struggling with those same things and as we need to.
Strategies have changed too.
And actually, if I can piggyback off that, when the reading and the writing and even the math goal, these goals came from analyzing our tests and seeing that not only our level one and two students, but even our level threes and fours that we already have are struggling with the informational text and with the analyzing and the higher-level thinking and the drawing conclusions based on the information given. So that's where these goals came from. We looked at what we had and decided, this is what we need to build upon and this is where our students need to grow.
These goals we actually pulled after the analysis of the data, or back to the common core. So we align these with the common core, really standard, move these right up, align them where our task force are. They actually make that very nice. So I think that's been a major shift for us to kind of.
That was going to be quiet, Connie. Connie or anybody in the group, one thing that, you know, I think adds to your school is the character education program that you have. Can you give us maybe four or five things that you do to develop the character education program at your school? I know you do a lot of things up there.
Well, I think a lot of things we do, we have to go around making sure we have recognition of the kids that are doing good things. We do our monthly student on program to make sure that we don't recognize just students that may inevitably, but also recognizes those students that are doing good things for the building. We have a very strong club base where all those clubs are working in terms of character education. Also this year with the ASO, we made a major push in terms of just two words, be nice. And always whenever we talk with students, whenever we make announcements, whenever we end anything, it's always, and remember, be nice. I think that's starting to have a factor, even though I think we are struggling with that. But I think we have to thank the middle school, the elementary middle schools because many of our kids over the past several years, I think, and I'm older, have seen the kids come up and they're stronger in their character aspects. There's a lot more pieces and thank yous in just being good kids. And I think that's something to recognize for what we always talk about. While we do the recognition of the students, we can honor or recognize their role, but I think what's key is the recognition of those students that are doing things okay on a day-to-day basis without necessarily being the highest level of achievement.
And my other thing is that as you drive by in the morning, you always say the word for the week. And I wanted to know how that was, huh?
The wow.
The wow. How is that used at the junior high?
You know why it's, I would be a wow on the second, that word of the week? Because we don't have enough keys. So we went to wow. That was actually came on the early test course. And then as they do the word of the week, not only in the morning announcements from the television studio, the students are encouraged and the teachers are encouraged to use the word. They also have cafeteria's, the word wall, where those words are up there. A lot of the classrooms, we have the words in the back. I know some in college, the teachers have the walls lined with the words of the week. So the word of the week has become something.
I look forward to it.
We live with, that is built into it, that I know Gary's bedroom who comes out and does the words, he's always hoping we don't have any of these though. The word we had, we made a title that blew his mind, it was a girl's word, a lot of these stuff. So yes, our word of the week back there is.
Thank you, great job.
Thank you, you guys.
Thank you very much. Yeah?
CNS High School BPT presentation.
Good evening, I'm Melissa Julian, the executive principal. This is Greg Bro in our BPT chair. We have various BPT members in the audience, Carol Gaynor, who is hiding, Jo Dahara, Jamie Sullivan, and a bunch of students here who are just excited to see us. Right? Yeah. So tonight, we just wanted to quickly review for you some of the strategies that we put in place at Systro North Syracuse based on the data that we had this summer.
All right. Let's agree now as our history. Remember, last year was the first year that we, just like the junior high, we went away from the departmentalized goals. We went more to our building-based. But the one thing we did do is we did last year let the departments figure out their own particular strategies to meet said goals. The one thing at the end of the year we figured out, that a problem that we had had was we had no way to necessarily measure those goals and nor did the departments have a way of figuring out if their strategies were efficient or not. So we went back and we came back to the drawing board over the summertime and we went into developing our goals for this year in such that a way that we had one overlying strategy for the entire building. So that instead of having the microcosm of individual departments, we now have the one strategy for the whole building so that we can see if, in fact, it does work across. So we had buy-in from all the teachers leading into this year's.
This summer, as Greg touched upon, Donna Marie Norton spent a few days with us. We had each of our BPT members, who also happened to be the department chairs, which actually works out really well when looking at data, come together. And over a course of two or three days, what we did is we analyzed all five of the necessary regions exams necessary for graduation. You saw a lot of the BPT demonstrations this, over the last month, focused mostly on math and ELA. Ours is more, all the students need to pass five exams to graduate. So what we did is we paired up and we looked at all five of the exams, Algebra, English, the two social studies, US and global, and then the science, one of the science exams, which happened to be living environment for us. It was great to watch this summer as the department chair from physical education sat next to the math department chair and they looked at the algebra exam and together they tackled where our students were deficient. After looking at all of that, we focused on our students with disabilities and also our economically disadvantaged students. And the common themes that we found across all five exams are up on the slide and they are, reading comprehension still seems to be a place where students struggle. Vocabulary in terms of content and questioning, but not only vocabulary in terms of the curricular area, but just some constant terms that they need to reinforce and hear. And the ability to inference was also a big theme across all five areas. That led us to looking at our goals and then, as Greg said, working to ensure that we developed one goal and one strategy per building this year.
And within that goal, basically what we had is each teacher across the building is going to implement eight informational texts within their classroom. Could be an article, could be a journal from a scientific reading, could be a magazine snippet, if you will, could be also the textbook as well within the classroom. And then what the target is, is minimum of two per quarter. And within there, we gave them a range of different things that they could work on. So basically, across the board, each student will have close to 64 different reading comprehension, vocabulary, or inferencing opportunities across the year. Minimally, again, two per class per quarter. And as a result, or sorry, by doing this, we're increasing their exposure through reading and writing. And again, with the thought of being all students, by the more times they see it, the more opportunities they have, the greater the chance of success, especially with an educator there leading them through it step by step. Within those assessments, up on the board, we basically said, we gave the teachers carte blanche, if you will. We said that as long as your assignment touches on several of the following elements, they needed to at least focus on the minimum of the main idea, summarize or put in their own words, paraphrase the actual reading, looking at the vocabulary that's critical to the understanding of the content, or also the vocabulary within the passage that the student struggled with. It doesn't necessarily need to go along with the instructional content. How does this passage impact the world, yourself, the district, the community, et cetera? What would the student like to know more about based on this? Or what is something a student agrees with or disagrees with and why? Current research has shown that if you have an emotional attachment to said reading, whether it be good or bad, that you will remember it better, well, you better off to remember it.
In addition, we had students looking to create their own test questions. What would be a relative test question that you could find based on the passage that you read? I did this activity with Dan Bowles in Albany one night and it is tough, it's very difficult. We asked students how to predict things. How will this impact the world? How will this impact us? How will this impact our district? Prior to reading, what is this about? What do students already know? Where are you in terms of what you're reading? And then after this reading, what has the student learned? And what can the student teach to someone else, a parent, grandparent, brother, sister, someone else in a younger grade? And then what does the student want to know more about that this article did not cover? What research do you want to go and cover further to learn more about that topic? So we just provided for you some quick samples of what we're already seeing in terms of the building and it's all over the board. And the teachers are doing some great things in their departments and in their areas. Nope. We can send you the links, I was hoping that they would work, but because they're on the flash drive, I don't think they're going to open. I was worried about that.
All right. So here's an example of the advanced photography reflection piece. So they state and defend what the proposed was for the marking period. Did you follow through with the concepts? Did your proposal evolve into something different? If so, what did it become? What caused this evolution of the concept? Listen, describe in detail the steps, the techniques you used, the similarities and differences of the subject matter, those various interpretations of the concepts of the work. And then to answer and address the following questions. Where'd you select the works from? How did you hope people would react to your work? What role did the following play in your life with those different pieces? Again, bringing it back to their own piece. And then finally, reflect on what you learned or achieved in the past 10 weeks by creating your proposal and how did these projects tie into, again, your college admission, your overall body work, and so on and so forth.
We're also tying into 21st century skills that students will have to use. And if you saw on Heather's, what she did is she tied it into either college admission work, concept, what it is their scholastic portfolio that they turn in for the awards. Fizette, I wish you could see Fizette, Fizette has done some wonderful things. And our Fizette program is a little different because after five weeks, they all switch to a different course and subject. So what they've asked the kids to do is prior to coming in that fifth week, they have the students take a reading home the night before or the week before on a certain element. of one of the five topics that they can choose from. They have to do a reading, and then they have to do a writing assignment. And the students, and the teachers all created them themselves. They went out and found the research. They've created them. They've asked the questions of the students. And the funniest thing was when I was down observing one day, one of the students said, "We have to do this again." And the teacher said, "Yeah, we're trying to help you learn how to read and write a little bit better." And the student said, "I thought this was gym class, not English." And so that was the typical response, but the students are starting to see the value in that as well, I think. And then in math, they started to work on creating dictionaries, in an empty dictionary that students can define vocabulary key terms in their own words, and then use that as an example to remember it either a picture, a diagram, or a mnemonic device. Our second goal fits into the goal two in the strategic plan, and this is our character building goal, where we are trying to strive to build a more welcoming environment for all stakeholders in the building. As everybody here knows, for the most part, last year CNS had a very difficult year, and we're trying to work on making it a place where students want to come, teachers want to be, and everybody's involved in the educational process and want to be there. And so with a new administrative team, we're constantly looking at, okay, how can we make this a more welcoming environment? And so we brought it to BPT. And these are just some of the things that we are doing and looking to implement to make the environment in the school a better place for everyone.
Some of the things that we've done so far this year even, we've done our half-days, within our half-days of the educational portion of the half-day, we've asked classes if they wanted to volunteer time to do community building within the classroom, doing different techniques within the class, again, learning different, not just going beyond the learning the names and working with each other to solve problems, but again, reaching out so that we can get more of a bond, again, between the teachers, students, students, students within the grouping. We have the Character Ed Awards once a month, again, noticing people for particular characters that do shine up above. We ask each teacher if they would please recommend and nominate a student for that. And also on the sheet, it does write down what the student did. You know, I nominated myself one this past quarter. They're, again, collecting toys with, help actually of the junior high school for disadvantaged children. We have mentoring, such as adopt the senior through the grip committee. We have a lot of our experienced educators who have sadly left us, who have retired, sorry, I should have corrected that, who come back to mentor our seniors. They meet with the seniors, they follow them through, and they help them, guide them on a step-by-step basis, especially for those at rest seniors. We do have a bigger brother and big sister going throughout the year. We do have a credit recovery program. It started out as a couple of different courses. It has now blossomed into a great system where we have an awful lot of students taking advantage of that to get them back on track so they may graduate with their cohort. And lastly, just this fall, we had an example of Spirit Week. We'll be doing another one during basketball season. In the picture here, this was 80's Day, and so we had a group of staffing that got together and celebrated with, well, 80's Day, if you will.
We're also trying to do more with staff and student tournaments. We had the dodgeball tournament last year that benefited a couple of different organizations. The senior class was one of them, and then the Cancer Society was a second organization. We had a ping pong tournament that benefited our character education scholarship award that if you want to have fun, come down and play ping pong with 250 students, and the balls are flying, and it's really interesting to watch. Principals Cabinet, our focus this year for Principals Cabinet, that's a group of students from each organization in the building, they come together to talk about different building issues and items. And so this year, the focus is going to be on improving student climate, on building wide activities, which I'm really excited about. We met for the first time. We're looking to do more with duets, and it was just a great meeting. I felt that it was worthwhile and valuable. Yep, Rachel shaking her head, she was there as well. Different theme weeks that we do, red ribbon, white ribbon, the week before Christmas, we're celebrating sad. Yomosha Community Dinner, which most of you attend on every year, and it's nice to see everybody there. And then, of course, we're having food and hat, glove, clothing, toy drives, all throughout the year to help our community members, and not just Cicerone or Syracuse.
So again, as of last summer in 2012, with a group getting together analyzing their data, we're planning on following that again in the future. This summer, we're going to get again, get together again and analyze the data of those five recent exams when they come in. We will look at whether our goal of having the reading comprehension across the board with the same strategy within departments, whether that was successful or not. By looking at the exams, we'll see if we're able to have a market improvement in all of them, due to the fact that all five exams up there do have some sort of reading comprehension component within them, both with the vocabulary of the questions and the content vocabulary. So our hope obviously is that we can able, are able to grow those exams and to gain those points so that we can get those students the credits they need to graduate and increase our graduation rate, which again is also within the strategic plan.
Questions?
Comments? It sounds, sounds really good, but like Connie, I've been around a long time, talking about reading and writing across the curriculum. Elementary people know about word walls and vocabulary building and whatever, you know, we just, again, as Connie said, with all of us as a district, looking at these core concepts and working towards the same things. It's hoped that in 10 years, when kids get up to the high school, they'll be different.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Good evening. Representatives tonight of the Health Oversight Committee. My name is Dave Allard. I'm plan administrator, and this is Anna Worksman, Ann Worksman, and Denise Moriarty. They're both representatives from the NSCA. One has an expertise in insurance, the other has an expertise in medical issues. So fortunate to have them. Do you have a number? Whoops. Oh, okay. Whoops. No, wrong. All right. Nope. These are the people who you see are listed, are our voting members and non-voting members. John Krill and myself are the members who don't vote, and we have three from the NSCA and three from. Our general purpose is to oversight of the self-insured group health plan, ensuring dissemination of all the necessary information to plan participants. And you've probably heard about some different mailings we have to put out. We hear and adjudicate claim appeals, which we probably had eight in the six years that we, eight at least, but not, I don't think any more than 10. But, so they're not very common, but they are serious when they come to us. We also make recommendations to the board and the NSCA regarding plan administration. We use consensus for all our decisions. Consensus is defined as everybody in attendance in a meeting, wherever there's, in a board of the decision, wherever we have. These items are relatively consistent year after year. The prescription drug has dropped down a little bit from last year and the year before, and we like to think that that's been brought about by some initiatives we've brought into the prescription drug plan that have, some of the retail cost, people are using mail order more, and we'll talk about that in a moment. NICS tax is a tax based on the number of items. These are our total costs. As you can see, there's a significant increase from last year to this year. There are a number of factors involved there. The last year was a particularly good year in 2010, 11, and our rates, we increased that year until 11, 12, was, we only increased them four and a half percent, which is the lowest I've seen in probably 15 or 17 health insurance rate increases. What happened unfortunately was the following year, 11, 12, had some very large increases, and to a great extent, that was based on our, having more large claims than we had had in the past. Large, large claims were roughly, we had about 2.9, 3.9 million dollars, 3.8 million dollars in 10, 11, and then in 11, 12, we went up on the same, you know, large claims into the bracket of six and a half to seven million dollars. Those large claims are the, one of the more unpredictable parts of having a large group. There's so few of them. We had 35 last year, and the year before that, I think there were around 27 or 28. And so you can see that they, they can fluctuate much more than you would have fluctuation in drug cost or some of the other things, because there are so few of them. Good news is that it's unlikely that that large number will, will repeat, because it was sort of an anomaly year, and we don't anticipate that same high level of large claims for this year.
One thing we're really excited about is possibly avoiding, by, including our members to generic drugs. And this cabinet, in part with the project company, they have provided a prescription drug plan, sending out letters to people, although we know they have to, a prescription is filled as generic unless the doctor contains it as to be filled as written. And so we had many people who had to fill as written, so we sent letters to them. Projected, they offered to, we have practices, call them and talk to them, call their doctors, and help them make the transfer from that year to here. They ran through us. And so they estimate if you say $370,000 just by minutes hours to get people to try to get there. And then also, now people who are at maintenance medicine, we are requiring them to have them fill the mail order because it's able to be provided, you know, savings to us. And so almost a quarter million dollars, same, same, avoided spending that, like one of the previous. So we're pretty excited about that. And the two other things up here that we've been looking at is nutritional counseling. It's currently provided for people who are diabetics, but not for other people. We're trying to weigh the benefits versus the expense of providing that to offset the further expenses. Consider and give for health issues and for that existing issue is to look at typically cover, cover that initially. So these are some of the things we look at when situations present themselves, how we can, you know, either make it better or adapt it, or is this an issue or is this an issue? So.
Do you have questions from anyone?
Increase in costs, the new healthcare act, did that play into?
Yes. When we first went to the, when the first part, the first time the age 19 to 26 provision went into effect, I contacted Palmco and said, "How much, you know, would that cost us per person?" And they estimated around $2,200 per individual. We had around 110 people come on. So it was about $210,000, $220,000 would be the ultimate cost of having those individuals come on. And there will be some other things that will happen as, as that goes into full implementation. There will be services that we don't provide currently that will be required to provide.
Have we figured that in, in terms of our budgeting process for next year?
We, we have the numbers. We're not, we've not yet figured a total number, but we have the number that they anticipate for, there are certain numbers of dollars that will be spent on preventive care. Like, right now, our plan doesn't provide physicals for the spouses, only for the employees, and only the employees age 50 and above. So if you're 48 and 44, as a couple, neither one of you gets a free physical. So when that goes into effect, I think that number is around $382,000. Most increase to the cost. Yeah, no, I think they, I think that's based on what they, law allows them to, as the law allows them to, not everyone will do it, but you know, a lot of people will.
They figure out the, the actuarial.
Are there other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you. Great job.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, we have no comments from the audience this evening. Do we have any board committee reports? I think Mr. Greg, Sandy, you got a committee report?
The Legislative Committee will be meeting on December 18th, Tuesday. Mr. Keegan bring to us where we are in the budget process. He does that each, each meeting. And we are going to be fortunate, as we decided as a group, that maybe we should bring some people from the outside to come in and talk a little bit about what's happening with the state. So we will have a guest speaker who happens to be in the audience tonight, and that's the OCM Superintendent Bosse's, Mr. Jody Manning will be our speaker on the 18th.
We welcome you, Jody. You, you take over a job that, that is one that helps us, as well as us helping Bosse's by using them. You had some good predecessors, and we know you'll do a great job. We wish you, we wish you well. So welcome. Thank you. Sandy, did you have anything for policy? No? How about board comments?
Just a couple of events. Dr. Dice, I won't talk about.
You check with her first?
I tried to check with her, so we don't talk. But two events I, I want to talk about. One was today at Smith Road School. Mrs. Farada-Breton and myself were there for their morning program. But if we remember our last board meeting, when Smith Road came and talked about their building planning team, the Physed teacher was here, and she's part of that team, she's the leader of that team. And I suggested that, you know, she goes beyond in her school and does essays and things like that. Well, today was an example of what Smith Road does. Not only is it the Physed department that's talking about health and healthy hearts and so forth, but the music program that's being presented right now at Gillette Road School by Smith Road dealt with all that too. So you have the music program, you got the Physed department, and then the whole school the next two weeks are going to write essays, including the teachers. I'm interested to see what the teachers write about. So there's a whole building who's working around one target with all the academic areas, which I just think that's great that a school does it. And the other thing, and I'm going to embarrass a young man in the audience, and I don't really, he doesn't mind, but yesterday Kay and I and Mr. Bernarsky, no, but that's right. Mr. Bernarsky and Kay and I were at the football, CNS football banquet at Driver's Village, which I always look forward to. I look forward to the scholarships that the Booster Club gives, and many of the scholarships are memories of people that have passed away that gave so much to our CNS program. And one of the awards, this gentleman won two awards. Mr. Hill, would you stand up? You won the unsung. You won the unsung hero award, am I correct? Yeah, he goes beyond the football team and does things in his community and he got the unsung hero award. Congratulations on that.
Catherine, did you have comments?
I would like to, again, this is not the first time, talk about the appointment of the substitute trainer revisited. On very few occasions, there are just too many events that need to be covered that two trainers just cannot do. And in these rare, and I call rare, instances, I would like to see that the trainer could be utilized. If it can't be the one we're using as a sub, then another trainer, which we've done before also. But to have an incident occur that the trainer has to leave an event to run to the other event if someone gets hurt, I don't think is right. And I'd like to see that Timmy gets the opportunity to have a third trainer, should it ever occur. It happened once in the fall season and I'm not sure about the winter season because of hockey. Hockey poses some problems. The next thing I wanted to talk to you about.
Hold on, go back to that real quick.
Oh, sorry.
That, we've got budget hearings starting within the next months. Is it something you wanted to, for us to revisit right now or is it something?
Yeah, because it'll happen before then.
Well, then, is there, Mrs. Farada-Breiten would like to make a motion that we revisit the hiring of a third trainer, is that correct?
Only, only when there's three events going on.
Only when there's three events.
And Kim would know that.
Well, we, we, we had, had discussions on it previously and decided that we weren't going, we were only going to use the substitute one, the way that, the way that it was presented by him.
If one was sick, right.
Right, right. So they, we appointed, I believe, Bill Brown, didn't we? As the substitute.
Right.
So Mrs. Farada-Breiten would like to make a request that we, we revisit that issue, maybe expand the time, whatever, however that might work. Is there anyone else that would be interested?
Expand the usage.
Expand the usage.
I would say that it would be a good idea.
If you, if you feel that, I mean, one time it happened during the fall season, one time, that's all. If there was three events going on, well, really there was five, but three events that needed to be covered.
So you've got, you?
Talking about three events, Kay, are you talking about varsity JV? Because, you know, at one time with modified, you look at the schedule, you got five, six going on.
No, no, I'm talking about varsity sports.
Okay, varsity sports.
Like it was volleyball, yeah, I forget, I had it all written down before.
You're just talking about varsity.
Just talking about varsity sports.
Swimming, no, swimming didn't have one. Timmy knows because I had it written down before and I just didn't do it this time, write it down.
So we have, we have, the majority of the board is okay with revisiting that then?
I thank you.
That, that would be, if Bill can't do it, you would want to hire?
No, Bill isn't even allowed to do it.
Right, right.
The only time he's allowed to do it is one of the other two or six.
When the other two.
What I'm asking is giving Timmy the, the option of getting a third trainer, whatever he wants to do.
When the necessity rises.
When the three things, there may be a couple of times during the winter time only because of hockey.
Right, right.
Hockey's a problem.
Three or more.
Three or more events, yes, that need to be covered. We're not talking swimming.
Okay, and?
Well, varsity and JVs are usually together. Like wrestling, it's JV and varsity, they're both the same time.
Dr. Dice and.
He's the ball, he's an ocean.
Varsity and JV sports and, and when there's more than one event.
He wouldn't know, I don't know.
Where there may need, there may need to be.
I'll tell, wouldn't you be just talking about home games because?
Oh, home, yes.
Because when the boys play basketball at home, the girls are away and they have a trainer, so, I mean, I don't think it would happen.
I know that, I know that we, we do take a trainer with us when we go football. Sorry, we do do that.
Just have them revisit it and give us a cost and then we can.
Timmy knows what he needs.
Okay.
Okay. And my next one is, I'm asking my fellow board members to approve a resolution of some kind or maybe explore it, to reapply the railings on the entrance used for after school events on weekends, after school events and on weekends. I feel is the right thing to do. The cost has been estimated between $750 and $1,000. This is at Roxboro Road Middle School. The only other option I can see is instead of going in that entrance, that to make the people walk around to the back and then it's level and there's no need for, for a railing. But I don't understand why the railing isn't there when it was there originally. It's just not there now. And he, Donald's been looking into it and I guess it's.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
I, I wasn't this addressed with the superintendent?
I did. In an email, I did do this.
You sent an email directly to the superintendent?
No, I sent it to Connie and Connie sent it to her. Sent it to somebody, maybe Donald. It's just, it's just something that I go to authorities and I see these people coming in with oxygen and walkers trying to get up two steps.
That, that's something that really we should, you know, you should talk to Kim about that. I'm sure that if there's a railing that needs to be addressed, that she'll make sure it gets done. You know, sure that if there's a railing that isn't there, that was there, that she'll get her maintenance people involved with it.
I didn't know because I don't go there. I just happen to be going there now because the optimist has a basketball program and I see the problem. And it bothers me if somebody might fall on those stairs, an older person, it's a liability.
Yeah, that's something, that's something you gotta go directly to Kim and she'll make sure it gets done.
Okay, thank you. That's all, I'm done.
Anything else? Go ahead, yeah, Pat.
Pertaining to that, what entrances are we even discussing?
Well, I wish I could help you with that because now we have to go in the tennis entrance at this high school and I have no idea what that is. But if you go in the back of the Roxboro Road Middle School, it's on the side, it's got two steps. It's not directly in the back. It's not, it doesn't come in by the gyms.
By the tech, tech head rooms and.
Okay, she knows.
Is that a service entrance?
You know, if, there's a parking lot there, there's parking slots and I'm assuming that some of the staff must go in that door too. And there's still no railing.
There are classrooms in that hallway.
Is there?
Okay, yeah. We'll.
I know you will, thank you.
We'll look into it, thank you. Dr. Dice?
Recipients. Tiana and I had the pleasure of attending. It was awesome to see all of our students who were with us. It was broken down by school. Everyone had the opportunity about them, which was a special moment for teachers, but most definitely for parents. I had a couple of parents send me emails just about how excited their students were. And so that was a great event. I also had the opportunity to participate in three listening sessions at the high school. Additional listening sessions will be scheduled for the rest of our buildings and we're looking forward to those. Cabinet will be reviewing many of the notes that we're taking at the high school. So thank you for those who participated and we welcome your feedback. Last but not least, and I totally lost my train of thought, but, oh, the last thing is that we have embarked or begun to have conversations around program evaluations and looking at all of the programs that we offer in the district, how beneficial they are, are they truly meeting the needs of our students? Where can we find improvements? Where do we need to make some changes? And so we'll be looking forward to providing that information to the board as well as to the public in the upcoming weeks and months as the budget process begins and rolls itself out. Thank you.
All the PIG kids, come on up, we'll sign your forms. Get you out of here in an hour. You guys are always nailing me if I don't let them out in an hour, so gotta get them out now.
And now you do it.
And then they exist. Anybody can sign, come on right up.
Anybody can do it, kids.
You better be a fine.
I knew you, who's the other one?
That guy, son.
Yeah, it's all right.
That's okay, I'll just call my teacher.
Little late to ask them now.
I know.
Young man, do well.
There you go.
He knows where I left.
Great, I'll take care of me.
I am needing, I am very needing.
See you up at high school.
Routine action items, are there any questions or discussions on items A, B, C or motion to take them as a group? Scott, or excuse me, Scott. Pat and George.
Scott sent it in by remote.
Remote. All recommended action is to approve A, B, C and D submitted, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Scott. Okay, discussion items, program studies, that's up first. Almost good.
Yeah, just the.
I was waiting for her to.
It's okay.
If you are.
Okay, good evening, my name is Jamie Sullivan, I'm the House One principal, Melissa Julian, you all know her. Tonight we'll be focusing on. Tonight we'll be highlighting some of the changes that we would like to propose to the board to make for the program of studies for next year and to the district. I'll go department by department. There weren't too many changes, so this will be brief. For art, we would like to delete advertising design as they have added advanced computer art. This course still has the foundation of advertising design, but what they really wanted to focus on was changing the name and the course description to reflect the common core in making the students college and career ready. And they wanted to focus on that. They've also decided that they would like to put some of their electives on a rotating basis so that all students will be able to take a computer art course all three of the years that they're enrolled at CNS. We have a class that's entitled Advanced Computer Art, which will be available for students to take in 2015, 2016. And this course is designed to take the place of Computer Graphics II. We also have Advanced Art and Design for the Web, which will be offered 2014, 2015. And this is a class where the students will learn how to create visually appealing art and design for the internet. For business, we've decided that we would like to delete Business Economics and Mathematics of Business Finance. We haven't ran those courses in a number of years, so we would like to make that change this year. We've also changed Financial Accounting to Accounting, where the students now have the opportunity to earn three SUNY college credit hours at OCC or four Supa hours at SU. The department also added Supa Sport Management. This is where the students will have an opportunity of earning three credit hours through SU. And this is an, an extension on the Sports and Entertainment Marketing Class that's really popular in the department. The department would also like to change the name of iPads for the 20th, 21st Century to App Marketing. In English, they would like to delete the course College Reading and Study Skills. That's a course that hasn't been run in a number of years, again due to low enrollment. Math would like to change the name of Math 101: Thinking Outside the Box to Project Math. And then Technology, they created Transportation B as a result of deleting Advanced Auto and Aviation Aerospace. And this course is designed to be a continuation of transportation, which is offered down at the junior high. And they also will be deleting Modern Energy Systems, Computer Systems I and Computer Systems II. So that's just some of the major changes that we've made to the program of studies this year.
ADAPEP funds for Canteen through BOSI's.
I just wanted to introduce the board, we're not gonna, this is not an item that requires any action, but wanted to introduce the board to the concept. As, as you may know, the town shop in Camillus, which is like the Canteen here in Syracuse, ADAPEP counselors that are provided by the West Genesee School District. So in discussions with town and, and with the Canteen, we identified the opportunity to possibly provide funds to support a part-time ADAPEP counselor at the Canteen. And what you have in front of you was, was the information on the COSER and working with, with BOSI's. So that the, the structure of it would be that the district would sign up for a COSER, those ADAPEP funds would be provided to the district and then ultimately to the Canteen. The Canteen would meet all of the programmatic requirements, reporting and otherwise, of ADAPEP. And then the district in subsequent years would receive aid on that funding. Looks like a great opportunity. Obviously, this would service North Syracuse students. However, there's, there is one, one fly in the ointment, we sent this to our attorneys and it's a bit of an odd arrangement. And so there's not a legal precedent for doing something like this. And so we've, we've, we've asked West Genesee to look into the basis upon which they're doing it and get back with us. And so I think what, what I'd like to do is, is leave you with the concept of there's an opportunity to provide additional services to our students through the Canteen in the form of ADAPEP counseling. The district has an opportunity to be a conduit for those funds and, and we're going to explore the legality of it or the legal options we have in doing so.
Did something similar way back in the day, which was permissible, and that was in terms of the arts and education, where the PTO's and HSO's got funding for the arts program. They bought these programs through the BOSI's and the district acted as a flow-through and then got aid on, on those things the following year, which would be the basis again for the PTO's to reinvest some of that money in the arts programs. The West Genesee arrangement's been going on for, for many years.
I think over 20.
I, I was going to say 15, so I guess I'm older than I thought I was. But, you know, it's been going on a long time and we're really, and, and it's not unusual with 501(c)(3)'s to use an entity like a school district as the flow-through for, for the funding. I don't understand why legal is having such a problem with it.
Yeah, I think, I think in, in, in the. Yeah, I think, I think in, in, in the case of, of this structure, we just wanna make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's, and that, that we don't accidentally do something that's, that's not appropriate. In spirit, you know, it's, one thing I did ask our attorneys to do, is I said, I don't want you to spend a lot of money researching this, you know, look at this on the surface, tell us if there's a legal precedent. And they, they quickly came back and said, we can find no legal precedent for doing this. So we immediately turned to the people that are doing it, and said, hey, what do you know, and what's your, and then, my hope is to be able to take something back to Von Chennick King, and say, can you revisit your opinion-based evidence? I haven't gotten anything yet, it's only been a couple days, and so, I'm hopeful I'll be able to bring something back to you on the 17th of December.
It seemed that it's a win-win.
Yeah, what is the worst-case scenario if we want?
Well, what, what, what could happen is, we could advance aid to the canteen, or that would, on the presumption, we were ultimately getting BOCs aid, and then we'd lose the BOCs aid.
Worst-case scenario, I mean, we're talking-
Well, only the aid, only the aid portion.
Over three.
So, but we would still be providing services through adapep, through canteen?
Yeah, it's, you know-
Right, right. Hey, did you have something to say?
I just feel that we're expending money that we don't have before we get it.
Yeah, I failed to mention, I failed to mention one aspect of, of the program, is that the canteen would reimburse us for the cost of the COSER, and then we would pass through them the full amount of the money we received. They'd benefit from the BOCs aid.
That was the same, that was the same principle that was used for that arts in education. There is no cost to the district, because the friends of the canteen are paying.
I understand that, but in the arts in education, it was done in our school district, we monitored it, we paid it, we saw what happened. You're doing it in a different, different place. We have no, no say in it. I'm just uncomfortable that we're using a BOCs COSER for our spirit that was not intended for, and we don't want it to come back and go on BOCs for using a COSER that shouldn't be used that way. That's all, that's all my position is.
It's been done, you know, for a lot of years with, with Camillus, and it's, it's, you know, they have to follow the BOCs program, provide the research, and the, and the statistics, and everything else through BOCs. So, yeah, there is control. And it is, and it is being used in the spirit for which it's intended, because it's servicing our kids for specific programs, and it's giving the statistics and, and whatever on those programs, and that staff person will be responsible for doing these things, and, and doing the reporting to BOCs.
We'll come back to you on the 17th with more information.
Discussion action items, first is a resolution to approve evaluators.
Okay, tonight, in front of you, we have a resolution that has two parts to it. This is part of the requirements for APPR, the new Annual Professional Performance Review, which is a fancy name for the teacher evaluation system and principal evaluation system. Every school board in the state is asked to certify their lead evaluators, and by doing that, you recognize the fact that these people have been through very intensive training, that our district has set up and adopted as to what that entails, and you authorize them to go ahead and to be able to evaluate classroom teachers in the first case of the resolution, and principals in the second case. I do want to ask that Connie make one amendment in the minutes. In the first part, Dave Farney's name is listed, and he is not included in this, is a point one director. But all the other directors and principals have been included. And in the classroom teacher resolution, Lisa Goldberg, who was a consultant teacher, and is involved in doing evaluations this year, her name is also included.
For the same reason that Dave Farney's-
No.
Pat? I can't understand-
I'm okay, I'm okay with leaving Dave Morton's name in there, because he has, he did do the training last year, although right now, we have not assigned him any in his limited capacity.
Right.
But it would be good if his name is approved, in case we do need to call upon him to help us out.
So it's just because Dave hasn't completed-
Dave hasn't completed the training.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to, you know, thank all of our people that really took the lead, they took the initiative to go to Albany. Very heavily involved in, in, you know, Sylvia always used to say that it's better to be proactive and to be part of the-
Development.
The development, rather than be reactive and wait till things come out. So, in that, in that vein, I really wanted to thank everyone that got so involved and, and got us ready to do this. So, Pat, is there any questions or any concerns related to that from anyone? Any discussion? Recommended action is to approve that resolution. Bob, second. Sandy, all in favor? That's unanimous. Next item, B, is a resolution to adopt a response to an intervention plan.
That will be me. Each district needs to have an approved response to intervention plan. Response to intervention is a problem-solving process of research-based instructional interventions that we use for struggling learners, and we try to match it to the student's need. Doing response to intervention for at least five years, but we are now looking to have an approved plan, because in order to move forward, especially when we're looking to designate students, the Special Education Committee needs to ensure that the students have gone through a response to interventional, intervention procedures, in order to follow through on what they need to do with their regulations. So, we have sat with the committee, and we have an approved plan by the committee, and we would need the board to approve what we're looking to do, but it is something that's gonna be a living document, that we will continue to look at, and if we need to tweak certain things, then we would come back to the board and look for that approval as well. But we have, in the packet that you were given, it is tiered, and there are interventions that are what they call Tier One interventions, that are more of a classroom-based or whole-group intervention. There are Tier Two interventions that are for small group, and then Tier Three interventions are geared for more, anywhere from three-to-one or one-to-one interventions, in order to see if the students respond to a more intense type of service.
Recommended action is to approve of the response to intervention plan. Michael Marizio, second. George, all in favor? That's unanimous, also. We have a policy that's up for amend and readoption. Are there any questions on that policy? Recommended action is to amend and readapt Policy 9010 dot four. Second, Michael D'Onofrio, all in favor? That's unanimous, also. At this time, do we need an executive session before we take up personnel? Recommendation is to take the items as a group. Sandy, second. Michael Marizio. Recommended actions are to approve A, knowledge B, as submitted. I'd like to make a motion at this time, that we move to executive session, for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with the principals bargaining unit, and the maintenance and operations bargaining unit, and to review the employment record of one individual with no action to follow. Do I have a second? George, all in favor? That's unanimous, and we're adjourned.